Testing, one, two, three. Mic test, one, two, three. Brian, can you hear me? Testing, one, two. Does it sound good? Yep.
Recording in progress.
At 6:02 PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Anchorage School District Board in our regular meeting on August 6th. And I'd like to start with a roll call of the members. Or I can acknowledge them. You want me to, you want to call the roll or you want me to acknowledge them? Okay. So we have in attendance in the room, Member Higgins, Member Jacobs, Member Donnelly, our student representative, Member Park, Pack, pardon me, myself, Member Holloman, Superintendent Bryant, Member Wilson, Member Bellamy, and joining us online is Member Lessons, I believe. Okay. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask our student representative to lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Also going to say, we were having a lot of audio problems during our work session, and a fair amount of it is people not getting the microphone right in their face. I will start interrupting members if they don't have the microphone close so that we do get a good recording for our record and for the people that are watching via YouTube. Um, our land acknowledgement. I did not, are you ready? Thank you very much.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it's with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you. Um, first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight. Entertain a motion to approve it as presented, or hear of proposed changes. Mr. Chair, move to approve the agenda. Has written.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection to approval of the agenda, Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, several meetings ago, the board moved Memorandum 146 Patriotic Activities um, to committee, and I know that it's scheduled for a governance committee meeting later this month. But, but I still believe that it, I haven't received any written suggestions for changes to Memorandum 146. Um, so I think it'd be appropriate to add that as a non-action item tonight. So I would move to amend the agenda to add Memo 146 Patriotic Activities to the non-action section of tonight's agenda.
Um, I'm going to say that would, in essence, reverse the action to move it to agenda at, or move it to committee at our last meeting. Um, is there a second? Seeing no, no one offering a second, I'm going to say that it remains uh, in the hands of the governance committee, and they will hear it at their regular meeting and take action on it to, to send it back to us or not at that time. Any other comments or questions? Any other, any objections to adoption of the agenda as presented? Seeing none, we have adopted the agenda. Um, our first item under Section B is our student representative report. Mr. Pack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Um, I hope you all had a wonderful and restful summer. I would like to just say that it is great to be back, and I'm ready for round two as I get to serve my last term as a student representative. It's an absolute privilege to serve with this board and administration, and to get to be able to listen to the testimonies from the public. In regards to the Student Advisory Board, our first meeting is set on September 10th of next month, and it will be an AM meeting from 9:30 to 11:30, and all our meetings will be held in this education center in the boardroom. As per the amendments we made in our last April Student Advisory Board meeting, we are expecting a larger group of student representatives than last year as we have increased our high school delegation to four delegates per school and middle school to three delegates per school. This is to accommodate more voices and also ease the transition of sixth graders into middle school, ensure that they have a voice. Over the summer, I had the privilege to represent Alaska with four other Alaskan students at the National Federation of High Schools Student Leadership Summit in Indianapolis. Let's give a quick shout out to the Alaska Student Activities Association and Ms. Kathleen Navar for making that trip possible. And at that conference, we learned key leadership skills, discussed educational issues on a national levels, and proposed solutions for them. And I was able to represent Section 8 in the National Student Advisory Council, which includes Alaska, Washington, Wyoming, Montana, and Oregon, on the team of sixteen selected students to help empower the voices of around twelve million students that are served by the National Federation of High Schools. I also, just last week, returned from Washington DC with the Anchorage Youth Court for a national assorted justice conference, and that was with six other Anchorage School District students. Uh, we networked with other organizations and learned how they re-enter their juveniles into the community after they offend to promote the overall safety of our communities, as well as heal the harms and address the root issues of our crimes. Also during that time there, we had the privilege to meet with Senator Sullivan and Senator Murkowski. We discussed issues surrounding substance abuse, abuse, youth mental health, and our justice system. Particularly, I was able to allude to our student advisory board um, having a potential role in the One Pill Can Kill campaign to raise awareness and strengthen prevention against the fentanyl crisis. Um, I look forward to working with my fellow elected officials, staff, and representatives for another great school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of our student representative? Seeing none, uh, next is our military report from Colonel Hanson at Jay Bear. Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you for the invitation. So, yes, my name is a-
Colonel, we're going to ask you to get right in the microphone.
Here we go. Um, thank you for the invitation. My name is Colonel Dustin Hanson. I'm the 673rd Air Base Wings Mission Support Group Commander. I'm succeeding Colonel Eric Dunn. And uh, I look forward to this, this school year. I look forward to uh, working with the students, working with the military-connected students particularly, and their families. Um, I look forward to over-communicating everything that we need to do to make a successful, successful school year. Um, uh, student education is everything to me, right? I'm a father of four as well. Uh, I, my students, my kids um, are, are home instructed, so I have a passion for home instructed uh, public schools, charter schools, private schools, uh, whatever it takes to get our kids educated um, as, as, as our future. Uh, I have a great team of school liaisons uh, with Adele and Holly. I plan to work on both uh, districts, both Anchorage and up there in the valley as well, because we have military-acadented students up there. Uh, and uh, lastly, I'll just say that I, I, I'm privileged to be here, so I look forward to, again, a great future working with you this school year. And um, I turn it over to, oh, one more point. Uh, here on base, I would just like to advertise to the teachers to, to let the kids know the basic exchange is offering gift cards to students that earn A and B grades, uh, ten and twenty dollars. So I want to turn the volume up on that as one more incentive why getting good grades and academic excellence is so important. I turn it over to any questions?
Any questions from board members? Oh, sorry. Seeing none, we do create, we, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Member Pack.
Mr. Pack? Oh, for the interest of the students, um, is the basic exchange, is that open to all students in ASD or just students on base?
This would be uh, students that have base access.
Good question. Good question. Uh, yes, Member Wilson?
I just wanted to say welcome and thank you for taking the time to come out and, and introduce yourself. So I appreciate and welcome anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here.
And thank you very much as well. Um, I know that for kids in the military or in military families, uh, life is different, and if there's anything we can do that makes education go better for them, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Board conference and committee reports. Anyone have anything they wanted to report out other than the written reports? Seeing none, we will move to goal monitoring in Section C of our agenda. Um, say again? Oh, okay. And that will resume in September, so we will not be doing that tonight. We, we haven't made any progress for the last couple of months here. We have to apologize for that. Um, public comment. And this is the time we hear from the public. We welcome your comments. They're very important to the board. We have set aside an hour at the beginning of the meeting for those who have signed up to give public comment. Those not heard during the first hour will be held at the end of the agenda. This is an opportunity for school board members to listen and for the members of the public to inform the school board about our views. We, unlike the assembly, we do not engage in discussion during this time. All comments are limited to three minutes. There is a timer on the front of the dais that will tell you. Uh, there is a small bell that chimes when you have thirty seconds remaining. Speaking time may not be given or shared with other people. Uh, when your name is called, please come to the podium. Please state your name for the record and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this uh, agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the school board, about your views. If you do have handouts to share with school board members, please give them to the executive's assistant who is seated right here, and she will distribute them to us. Finally, I want to call your attention to the detailed boardroom decorum guidelines and expectations that are available at the door. As you enter the boardroom, uh, please review. On our list of speakers on non-action items, our first two folks up are Thomas Id and Gabby Id. You are here and can come forward. Thank you. I'm going to ask you to get close to the microphone so we do get a good recording, and you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm grateful to be here representing many parents, teachers, and community members at Moms for Liberty Anchorage who seek to improve education for kids in our community and stand for parental rights. This is a grassroots, nonpartisan effort by all colors, races, and creeds to ensure the safety and success of our children within ASD. We support the patriotic activities proposal in committee. We look forward to an efficient resolution by the board in support of this proposal with accountability for implementation by the district, beginning with adding it to the agenda as soon as possible. Moms for Liberty Anchorage also supports a vote by the board to prevent the district from keeping secrets about children from their parents and requiring teachers to deceive families in order to keep their jobs. The endorsement by the district without a vote of the board to privately obtain information from a student without parental permission is an assault on the family, driving a wedge between a child and their legal guardian. The very existence of these guidelines inviting minor students to keep secrets from their parents harms the parent-child relationship, which the US Supreme Court has held is constitutionally protected. See Killian v. Walcott. Parents have a fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their children. Parents are a child's first and most impactful educators. Culturally and collectively, we recognize that each child is precious, and no one advocates for a child as well as their parents. We are the experts on our children. In the event that evidence shows abuse or neglect, ASD staff are required to alert proper authorities. Parental rights may not be reduced without due process. Hiding critical information about kids from their parents is outside the district's authority. Leveraging teachers' livelihoods to adhere to this egregious agenda is unethical and prevents any meaningful education the district might provide. The district does not have the resources nor capability to stand between a parent and their child, nor should it. This is an education organization, must act accordingly. Political agendas, like gender ideology, do not belong in our educational institutions. They undermine the success of students and alienate parents from their children in a way that is irrefutably detrimental to the growth and development of students. These guidelines create discrimination, exclusion, and indoctrination the way DEI does, which is wholly inappropriate in schools. Let's return to the basics. Roughly two-thirds of ASD students cannot read at grade level. There are two sexes, zero genders, and infinite personalities. We are teachers, how are teachers expected to educate if administrators refuse to adhere to biological facts and basic grammar definitions? It requires a special kind of cognitive dissonance to insist that education is your role while educating outcomes remain dismal, and children are encouraged to abandon their primary support system. With transparency and accountability being a major value of the district, it's way past time for the school board to vote in favor of protecting children by partnering with parents instead of conniving behind our backs. We do not co-parent with the district, but-
Thank you very much. Next, we have Maureen Crumley in person, followed by Michael Quimby. I'll ask you to be close to the microphone, and you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening, board members. My name is Maureen Crumley. I am part of the Anchorage community, speaking on behalf of my family, neighbors, teachers, and as part and member of Moms for Liberty Anchorage. I support Memorandum 146 Ceremonies and Observances. This proposal to include patriotic activities has stalled, and I would like to see it advanced to a vote from the board. I think our students will benefit from the proposed activities. Instilling pride in our country also provides a sense of unity and inclusiveness through which we all can benefit. The recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance and playing the United States National Anthem and the Alaska State Flag Song are wholesome experiences for our Anchorage school students. Please consider returning to this proposal and scheduling a vote on this memorandum, ceremonies, and observances of the patriotic activities. Thank you for my opportunity to speak to the board.
Thank you very much. Michael Quimby, here in the audience, thank you. And if you'll be close to the microphone, you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Um, I just wanted to put a face to the name. I have contacted the school recently regarding the school start times. Um, I've been contacting, contacting since May of last year, once it was voted in. But I just wanted to make known to the school board, um, the public opposition to the early uh, elementary school start times as well as the late middle school and high school start times, which push activities later, um, after-school employment later. It makes it difficult for families. Um, too, I, I've been contacting directly um, since last year. In 2018, when the school board first um, suggested earlier start times, there was a lot of public involvement, a lot of public process. Um, lots of opportunities to be involved. In 2023, um, in March, there was a survey and some public involvement, but not enough to to really gauge the public opinion in my, in my opinion. Um, so I started a survey recently, and in the last two weeks, uh, on change.org ASC start times. In the last two weeks, there's been close to three, ever at two hundred and eighty-eight signatures um, in under two weeks. Um, my pool of influence is fairly limited, um, and I have not publicly promoted it until, I guess, this meeting right here. But I'd, I'd like to make known that there is a, a large part of the population um, who are opposed to it, and I'd encourage the school board as well as the school district to continue monitoring that as the school year begins. I understand school starts next week, and the, the opportunity to change is basically gone before the school year starts. But that doesn't mean we need to continue with a program if it turns out to have a limited effect or a negative influence on this, on the elementary school students or after-school programs. Um, in particular, we're taking six grades of our education system, which, when I looked at today at their current enrollment, was forty-seven percent of the students in the school district, their elementary school students. And we're taking, we're removing an hour of sleep from them. I understand some students may wake up early, but the general guidelines from the American Academy of Pediatrics as well as um, sleep- um, sleep, sleep medicine provide nine to eleven hours of sleep. Um, nine to twelve in some instances, and so I don't think it's appropriate to put elementary school first. We can give high scores extra sleep without affecting elementary school so negatively. If they went second, they would get fifteen minutes less sleep. Um, if they went last, they would get additional sleep. Uh, we could also put middle school first, um, which would give them fifteen minutes less sleep. Sorry if I quoted some of those wrong, but basically the changes would be minimal with some slight revisions. So please consider that. Please reach out to the school, um, generally and ask for public input as it continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to check again, Thomaside had signed up to be in person. I take it he's, don't see him in the room, so. That concludes the people we have on the list for public comment. That brings us to item E on our, uh, agenda, the consent agenda. And
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda as written, uh, absent any member pulling an item listed.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Is there any opposition? Seeing, hearing none, we have adopted the consent agenda. Move to section F, student here.
Because member Lessons is not in the room, I think we have to do a voice vote.
Pardon me, I, I believe you are correct. I will ask our executive assistant to call the roll and we'll do a voice vote. This is to approve the consent agenda.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. By a vote of seven oh, we have approved the consent agenda. That brings us to section F, our action items. Um, the only item we have as an action item regards a student hearing. Would entertain a motion on that.
Mr. President, I move to approve the action item regarding student hearings, uh, which involves the reinstatement from an expulsion of the student associated with ASD incident number one, three, six, four, three, five, seven, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is not an item that we discuss in the meeting. Uh, we'll ask our executive assistant to call the, oh, a member Donley.
Point of information or procedure. Are we allowed to discuss non-identifying information on the merits of this decision? The facts that are involved with it?
I'm gonna say that generally we do not, just because of the, the danger of saying something identifying if we get into a discussion of it at all.
I'd just like to be able to explain my vote, um, uh, based on just the facts, not, nothing to do with, uh, identifying.
I'm gonna say if there's no objection from the, the rest of the body, allow people to do that and just with the the reminder that we should say absolutely nothing about the particulars of, of the issue.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, remember Donley?
I, I think the intent for uh, the, I mean, this is, this information involves a student, which is confidential information, which is why we have our opportunity in executive session to discuss, to share, to ask questions. And then you make up, you, you decide why you're going to vote. I don't know that I've ever during my tenure on the board, ever had a student issue, hearing issue come before the public for discussion, only for a vote. The discussion should have taken place in the executive session. That is in keeping with our processes.
That's my memory as well. Member Jacobs?
So Mr. Chair, yeah, I'll, I'll add that, uh, my understanding regarding executive session disclosing information is board members are prohibited from disclosing or discussing information that we've obtained in executive session. Um, and that would severely limit our ability to discuss this issue. Um, as most board members, I imagine, knew nothing or practically nothing, uh, before executive session. So I think that's historically why we have limited discussions. So I would encourage us not to set a precedent here, especially given the federal law that's required with us maintaining confidentiality about student info. Thank you.
Member Donley?
Actually, Mr. President, you and I were here about seven years ago where we did have a discussion of a a student hearing aspect without providing identifying information. So it has happened before, um, and I would try my very best to limit the facts, you know, or the discussion to a, a philosophical or non-identifying information, yeah.
I'm gonna say my inclination is still out as long as we don't discuss the particulars of the issue at all. It has to be all about you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I believe in the constitutional standard of escalating, um, seriousness of punishment based on the seriousness of the of the action that's, uh, being, uh, punished. And in this particular situation, under existing board policy, there's a minimum. And that minimum applies to a wide range of potential misbehavior. In this case, we are essentially adopting the minimum when I think the range of misbehavior is quite beyond the least offensive violation. And that's why I'm concerned about it and I expressed that concern previously, and that's why I'm gonna be voting against it today because I believe it doesn't meet the constitutional standard of a sliding scale of punishment to the seriousness of the crime.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a statement? Think, member Bellamy?
Uh, thank you. I think the, um, the place to get member Donley's question, uh, addressed is through policy. It's not through a discussion of a student hearing at this time.
Member Donley?
When I raised this as a policy question before the board in the past, I was told that there would be opportunity to have more serious punishment reflected than just the minimum that was in the board policy. So this is absolutely appropriate. I mean, that argument is just specious.
Any more comments? I will ask our executive secretary to call the roll for a vote.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, we have upheld the administration's motion.
Recommendation.
That brings us to section G, our non-action items. Are there any that anyone wishes they had pulled back at the beginning of the meeting? Seeing, hearing none, uh, these will come up as consent agenda or action items at our next meeting in two weeks. We, we do not have any other signups for public comment under section H. Section I is our superintendent update. Superintendent Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a, a few remarks for the board and the community as we gear up for back to school. So we are in full swing and very excited to welcome back our students, family, and staff to our, our new twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I have the opportunity to shake the hands of dozens, if not hundreds, of incredible families, uh, teachers, uh, support staff, clerical staff, principals, and, and many, many more, um, as we've started to welcome our community back into our schools. Um, a few thanks, thank yous. Uh, first, thank you to the Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators, uh, Lutheran Social Services, Team ASD, and our many volunteers for a spectacular back-to-school supply event at Betty Davis East Anchorage High School on Friday. We gave away thousands of supply-filled backpacks and, uh, it really does set our students up for a successful school year. So many things. And I know that's not the only event. There have been events all over the city, um, this past weekend and some more coming up. So we want to thank all of our partners for doing what you do to host these events because they truly make a difference. Um, everything from haircuts to eye exams to, you know, just telling students they're gonna have a great year really goes a long way. So thank you. Uh, and then lastly, I just want to share that we are, uh, very well positioned to implement our major changes uh, that have been in the works for months. So for parents listening to my remarks, one thing that you'll notice is our staggered first days of school. So let's talk about that for a minute. So that means that most of our students will begin the first day of school on Thursday, August fifteenth. That includes our students in grades one through five, six and seven, and ninth grade students. And then with the exception of our kindergartners, the rest of our students will join us on Friday, August sixteenth. Why are we doing this? The, the intent behind our August fifteenth start date is really to get our younger students back into their routines and also to support the transition of our students who are new to middle school and new to high school. And as a former ninth grade teacher myself, I can personally attest, um, to the fact that the first few days can be very disorienting for our new ninth graders and uh, new to middle school students just because of the change. And while it won't solve all the issues, I really do hope that this transitional day will help them start the year strong. And on that note, as was mentioned earlier, this will be the first year that district-wide all of our sixth graders, for the most part, will be in our middle school buildings. And, uh, that focus on their transition is a key part of setting that initiative up to success. So as you can imagine, uh, having sixth graders and seventh graders being new to a building can mean a lot of anxious energy. So we want to set up those students for success. Uh, and then on a separate note, we are ready to launch our new school start times. So our start times for our elementary students will be at eight AM. And our high schools will begin at eight forty-five AM and our middle schools will start at nine thirty AM. I do want parents to note that our middle and high schools will be open, uh, an hour early to provide some support for parents who work and have other obligations. We want to be good partners in this work. And, uh, lastly, a, a major thank you to our returning and new bus transportation professionals. All signs are looking positive that our bus reps will be fully staffed for the first day of school. Uh, thank you to our bus drivers and our transportation team for doing a lot of work behind the scenes to avoid, um, what could have been an incident similar to a couple of years ago where we were in a, a, a much different situation. Uh, I, I would say that the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is really going to be the moment when ASD tackles one of its most ambitious, uh, set of changes to date. And, you know, turbulence is a normal part of the change management process, but our fundamentals are looking strong. We have a great team and we're ready to, to get this year going. So, uh, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions about the superintendent report? Seeing no hands. School board and administration comments. I will start at my far left with member Higgins, if you have comments. None? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just wanted to echo Dr. Bryant's remarks, uh, regarding appreciation for the, a community backpack, um, event. I know other board members love comments as well, uh, but thank you to our communications team, um, to community leaders like, um, Rosalyn Grady Weiss, who, um, was present and, um, put a ton of work in with, who was associated with the, um, Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators, Ms. Toni Riley. Um, I know there were a number of different staff involved and it was during a workday and I couldn't unfortunately get away. Um, but if we move it back to the weekend going forward, I'd be happy to participate and, um, I'm glad it was well attended and we gave away all the backpacks we had available. So thank you for that. And, um, just want to thank, um, all educators, support staff, and professionals for making the school year, um, uh, successful and, um, looking forward to supporting as the year goes along. Thank you.
Member Donley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, I'm concerned about the upcoming school year and safety in our schools. Um, traditionally, we've had sixteen APD officers assigned to the SRO program and they've covered designated to be to our high schools. Um, at the work session held before this meeting, we were advised that there's gonna only be ten officers at the start of this year. And even at sixteen, there was not full coverage of all our high schools for every day, um, because of the four-day work weeks of APD. Even with two officers assigned to a high school, there was a, a rotating Friday where there were, or, or Monday where there was no officers present. And we in fact did have an incident of, uh, a gun come into a school on one of those days where officers weren't there several years ago and it was really due to the great work of the school staff that prevented that from being a more serious event. There's no officers specifically assigned to our middle or elementary schools. And I thank the administration for, um, dedicating additional funding, uh, to employment of three additional security personnel. But as, as they explained to us in the work session, they are not a substitute for, uh, police officers. Um, so I'm hoping the assembly hears this concern and I know there's a huge challenge faced by the municipality in recruiting, uh, full contingent of patrol officers. At the same time, I remain very concerned about the safety of our schools and the, this over thirty percent decrease in the presence of our SROs in our schools. I also wanted to talk about Title IX. Um, Title IX was a breakthrough federal law to ensure fairness and, and education and particularly a breakthrough law in fairness to women's sports. But I wanted to mention another aspect of that, and that is, um, that I had, um, introduced a resolution last year um, to revise existing, uh, district guidelines regarding notification of parents. And the board chose to defer action on that resolution to allow new directions from the Federal Department of Education to come out prior to acting on it. Well, those new guidelines have come out now. Multiple lawsuits have now, um, have prevented the implementation of those guidelines in twenty-six states. Um, and more states probably to come. So we're in a, and Alaska is one of the states that those have been frozen in. So I believe it's time for us to step forward and address our own guidelines. The board has never voted on these guidelines regarding parental notification. Um, it's not something that should be just left to an administrative guideline. The differentiate, differential between a guideline and a policy is significant. The policies are adopted only by the board. And an administrative regulation would be based on a policy adopted by the board. But these things are neither. They are administrative guidelines. So they're not even regulations based on policy adopted by the board. So this parental notification matter is so significant and so important to families that I believe it deserves a vote of the board and not just to be included in a administrative guideline. So I'm hoping the board will revise its prior decision to not consider my proposed, uh, policy change or policy adoption that would overrule some aspects of these guidelines, given the fact that the Title IX is now locked up in federal court. Finally, just regarding the importance of patriotic activities and patriotism in this country. If there's any country as diverse and, and with as many ethnic and social economic backgrounds as America, I don't know who it is, United States. But because of our great diversity, uh, it's even more important than in other nations that we have commonality. We have things that hold us together as a nation and as a people. And George Washington recognized that and, and I think most people recognize how important our customs or traditions and those things hold it together as Americans are. Um, that's why I'm hoping the, that's why I made the motion earlier on the agenda to reinclude consideration of, uh, one forty-six regarding patriotic activities and, um, hoping that we can get that. regarding patriarchy activities and I'm hoping that we can get that back before the board soon. As I mentioned earlier, I haven't received any written proposed amendments to that uh resolution or that memorandum, and it's been before the board for over sixteen months now, I believe. Um, it's, but I'd just like to say some uh quote from George Washington's farewell address to the country in seventeen ninety-six. Citizens by birth or choice of a common country, that country has a right to concentrate your affections. The name of American which belongs to you in your national capacity must always exalt the just pride of patriotism more than any other appellation derived from the from local discriminations.
Member Pat? Go for the comments. Member Wilson?
Yes, I I wanted to recognize um our school business partners and a couple of the events that took place to help support our families and our our students and our staff. Um, I know several of you mentioned the HUGS uh back-to-school event, which was amazing. Um, I heard I I was not able to attend, but as I understand it, over eight hundred backpacks of school supplies were given away. Um, again, I want to say thank you to ASD, to uh Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators and Lutheran Social Services, as well as all of the other volunteers and staff that jumped in to help with that. I also wanted to recognize the um the Clothesline Project. It was the tenth annual project, so ten years. Um, I I wasn't able to attend this one, but I've been there many times in the past at Clark Middle School. It's amazing um how many clothes and coats and um how many resources are available at that event. And as I understand it, families were lined up around the entire school. Um, and the first kids that showed up to to get in line um showed up at six thirty AM when the event started at ten AM. So um I want to say thank you to Anchorage Cops for Community for that coordination um and some of the the major local partners that helped with that as well. The Anchorage Firefighters, Local twelve sixty-four, the Knights of Columbus from Anchorage, who gave away seven hundred and twenty coats, Matson, which is a shipping company, New Vision, Walmart, um all of those efforts helped uh about seventeen seventeen hundred community members, one thousand seven hundred community members got to um take home clothes and coats and um have access to resources. I wanted to thank our our very own Steve Brown. I know he puts a lot of um a lot of time and effort and um love into that project. And Officer Jonathan Butler does as well. And thank you to our communications team for the video they created, um which is coincidentally on YouTube. I was just um accessing that. So please take a look at that. They do an amazing job. Uh, our, I I had the privilege of attending the Fairview Block Party a few weeks ago and wanted to say thank you to the Army National Guard for um the setup that that they had there was, we had a a lot of local um Fairview kids that got to attend that. It was, it was pretty cool. Um, and I also had the privilege of attending the Office Success Academy. I really enjoyed that because our um our office folks, our totem uh employees had the opportunity to interact with departments from around the district. Uh, I I heard great things about about that, as well as I think there's several other um opportunities for for our staff to to have some training before school starts. So um thank you to talent management for the the work that they did on the Office Success Academy. That that was awesome. And thank you to all of our business partners that have uh put in so much effort to help our our students start the school year off um with all of the supplies they need and and all the of the the love and effort that comes with that. So, thank you.
Member Bellamy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ditto everything uh member Wilson just said. I do want to um thank, really thank the staff. I mean, we had staff, family members of staff. We had uh neighbors and cousins and uncles. Everybody pitched in to make everything work. I never want to see another hot dog in my life, but it was an amazing um gathering. And I just want to thank uh everybody for for that. And our partners are amazing and and I really, uh they always come. Uh, they show up for our kids, and I I really love that. Um, for, you know, um I think our next committee meetings are all on August twenty-ninth, starting at eleven o'clock with governance. Uh, then I think we have finance and then communications. So uh that's it, the the uh uh August twenty-ninth. And those meetings will be available to you uh online. All with that, I really don't, um, I just want to welcome all board members back. Hope you guys got some rest because we're in for an exciting and uh wonderful time with getting schools opened and our kids back to um back to their routines. Uh, lots of innovative things going on. So I'm excited about the school year. So um with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Member Lessons?
Hi, um hopefully, can you all hear me? I guess I'll take that. Um, I wanted to briefly thank the IT team for troubleshooting uh the audio issues that were uh may have plagued the work session. Um, everything came through loud and clear. So so I appreciate that. Great job. Um, I also appreciated the chance to briefly review the work session slides. I didn't have a chance to attend that meeting, but we'll we'll follow up. Um, but it is certainly concerning that um we have a substantial deficit looking uh ahead to FY twenty-six. Though I do appreciate that the one-time funds we've received from the state uh are appear to be allowing us to decrease the high level of risk that our prior budget decisions um required us to make. And then the the final thought I had is that I would really value updates from the administration. Uh, perhaps as soon as the next board meeting, if at all possible, about the district's readiness for the new freshman academy course. Um, so what is entailed in that course? What does the curriculum look like? How are teachers being prepared for its implementation? And any information uh that can be shared about the career expo that will be happening this fall? That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to say we we have had a fair amount of communication from the community about the change in start times. Uh, we knew it would be a huge disruption and and it is. So far, a a lot of the community seems to be working with it. And of course, some people have serious issues in trying to adjust to it. And for other people, it's fairly simple and everywhere in between. We will be, you know, we did do it for specific reasons. We'll be looking um whether or not our high school students are more alert in the morning, uh whether or not our attendance changes. Uh, and of course, and it can call it anecdotal, but we're a small enough town that that matters uh about how it affects people's work lives and ability to do all the things they want to do both in school and out of school uh to see if we're really getting the kind of results that we hoped for in making the change. Um, also, one wanted to note that that I was in a classroom for twelve years in this district. I never felt any pressure to be dishonest with a parent about anything. I would hope that no teacher in this district does. And if they ever do, that they should come to the board uh and register how that came to pass. Uh, there's some difficult conversations, to be sure. I, we unfortunately become embroiled in in issues we never want to be. I've had to call child services. I've had to uh talk with non-custodial parents that wanted information. We weren't able to give them. These these things happen. Uh, and the question that I always have is is, does board policy help? Or does board policy make it even more complicated than it already is? And that's that's something that we will be struggling with as we move through to the fall. Also did want to say to the administration on the staggered start, um for a a number of years, I was back several weeks before uh teaching staff was because I did technology work. And there were a number of times where I met with a parent and a child at the school when no one else was there because I had keys to everything. And they had a child that was just frightened of school. Wasn't sure they wanted to come to middle school. And I was in middle school most of this time. And so we just took a walk through the building. The, you know, it's fairly empty. The upperclassmen weren't there. There wasn't any, there weren't any bells. There wasn't any stress. They walked around for about twenty or thirty minutes, and they were fine. And so to some degree, the staggered start, I think, speaks to that, that that especially for kids coming to a new building, a bigger building, more kids and and all that comes with it. That opportunity to have sort of a soft opening uh really does help alleviate stress of of our most critical clients, which are our kids. And I I think it'll be really interesting to see how that works. Uh, I know for the schools that have been doing a day for ninth graders, the feedback has always been very positive about that. Uh, and looking forward to see how that works out. And then lastly, I just hope we can all remember, uh and again, this came from being in the building for weeks before things started. Uh, on non-school days, and especially before the school year starts, schools are kind of like really boring office buildings. Everybody has a big office. That's that part's kind of cool. And then the kids show up, and the volume level goes way up, and the activity level goes way up, and the fun level goes way up. And of course, a whole bunch of problems start happening also. So it all comes as one big package, but but that excitement and the excitement kids have uh in getting ready, that, you know, in the events they're talking about where kids wind up early to get backpacks. They want new shoes. They want a coat. They want to get everything ready because they are excited about coming back. Uh, that's the momentum we want to come in with and hopefully sustain as far into the year as we can get. Um, because they do kind of burn out after a little bit. And then I'll say the the other beautiful moment is at the end of the year when they realize they won't be seeing their friends every day and they get really sad. Um, it's, it's really cute. The beginning of the year, the end of the year are really cute times. And uh we want to make that happen for kids because it is something that they remember for a very, very long time. Also, so I came back to sit down. There was a gift for me on the front counter, a book, The Parent Revolution. I'll take that home and read it. And then the board actually has their own small library that I'll put it in so that it's available to everybody else on the board. I'm not sure where it came from. I haven't looked to see if there's a note cut. But thank you very much for that. Um, that wraps up my comments. Do staff have any comments they would like to make? As usual, we see no hands. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, and we are adjourned.